I call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order for the February 11th, 2013 meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Larry Harbin to lead us in our invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise. May we pray. Father, we thank you once again for this opportunity that you've given us to serve you. And Father, and in turn, you allow us to serve the people of this county, both the parents, the faculty, and the teachers, and most of all, the children of this county, Lord. We thank you for that responsibility and that opportunity. We ask you, Father, that you please give us guidance and wisdom throughout this evening, that everything would be done to help each and everyone mentioned before. And Father, we'd be amiss to not, as we always do, ask you to please be with our servicemen and women around the world as they protect us, they protect our freedoms, and that does include our freedom to educate these children. We ask all of these things in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'd like to publicly announce that Mr. Steven Kirkpatrick couldn't be here this evening. He had a family member that was ill, so he got to do some babysitting tonight and do some other things to keep the family going. So our thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Kirkpatrick's family. Board members, please mark your calendar for March 11th. Our next regular board meeting will be held here at the Education Center. I'd also like to say that we have the Motta Grau coming up on March 2nd. I do know a lady that's running for Motta Grau queen. That happens to be my mother, and all donations will be accepted right here, or you can let them have them in her name to the Haywood County Schools Foundation. So I told her I'd give her a plug tonight, so I did. We have great candidates, though. So we've got three other folks vying for titles. And is that correct, Ginny?
There's actually four.
Four.
Well, two queen and thirteen.
Very good. So we've got a good opportunity to give to the Haywood County Schools Foundation. The good news is, is all the money that's raised goes back to our kids for scholarships.
And you have the rain thing.
That's correct. Rhonda set the bar really high. She did a great job last year, and congratulations again. But your days are numbered.
Well, once a queen, always a queen.
There you go. I like that. Also, don't forget that we have a special event coming up at Bethel Elementary School, the Title I Celebration. We've been celebrating for a good while, and it's fine with me if we keep on celebrating because it's quite an honor. But anyway, on Tuesday, February 26th, at 9:30 a.m., try your best to be there and celebrate this wonderful accomplishment from Bethel Elementary School. Do we have any other announcements that we'd like to make at this time? Mr. Rogers has asked to make a few comments.
Within, like Mr. Francis said, the celebration. It's been a great celebration in the last couple of months, and as us board members have been honored at many schools to thank us for what we do as board members. And I just tell you, I've, a little thought crossed my mind the other day, and I just, as I was going through the schools, visiting, I thought about the caring hands. Those caring hands that touch the steering wheel of those buses every day. The caring hands that touch these children's lives each day. Our administrations with their caring hands that take care of these schools. Our custodians with their caring hands that open the doors and make sure the schools are clean and safe. Our maintenance department that touches the schools. All their caring hands. Our cafeteria staff feeding these children each day and every day in and out. All the people of this school system, I would just like to say thank you to y'all and your efforts, and our administration, and our classroom teachers, and our parents, our volunteers, for their caring hands and their caringness of our children in this county. And I would just like to thank y'all because you're the ones that need to be honored more than we do, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank y'all for what you do. We have been overwhelmed last month, and, board members, before you leave, I want you to take time to look through some of the many thank you cards that we got. These are came from Bethel Elementary, and there's been all kinds of different things come to us thanking us for the job we do. And as Mr. Rogers said, it's you guys that do the work, and thank you for that. Any other announcements? Under agenda adjustments, we need to have a couple of items added. One is a building and grounds item, a couple items that have come up that we need to add to the agenda. We'll ask Mr. Harbin to do that between items number 11 and 12. After we get through with 11, we'll go right into building and grounds. And then, I think, board members, we need to have a brief discussion on the general direction of the school safety issue that we talked about last month. Let's talk about that just a little bit, and the possibility of maybe having some public input for that subject coming up about what we want to do in response to our letter that we sent to the county commissioners last month. And so we'll talk about that in open session sometime after Mr. Harbin gets done with his building and grounds update. Are there any other items that need to be added to the agenda at this time? Okay? Well, everyone always looks forward to this time of year when we get our school checkbooks, and for that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Ginny Wood.
Thank you. Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte. Tonight, we kick off our seventh annual school checks program fundraiser. Over the past seven years, this has been a very successful fundraiser for our schools, raising over $150,000. Last year, we sold every single book, and we even had to scrounge up more from other places. The books are $15, and the schools get to keep $9 of that. $1 comes back to the foundation, and then the other $5 goes for printing. The sale runs this year from February 19th through March 22nd. And Doreen Smith from School Checks is here tonight, and I'd like to thank her because she gets all the sponsorship, she helps get all the prizes, and securing the prizes for the kids and the teachers and the schools that win or sell the most. And then we'll come back in April to recognize all the top sellers. Tonight, I'm pleased that we have Waynesville Middle School students Jared Feinberg, if you want to come up here, McKinley Morris, and Jacob Mashburn, and the principal, Mr. Putnam, here to sell the first 2013 school checks to you guys. So I hope you all brought your $15. They're going to come around and, or 20, or if you just want to make a donation, I'll be fine. But they're going to come around and bring you to whoever wants mine.
Big spender.
What was your names?
Jacob.
Thank you guys so much for your support of all the schools and students and faculty. Thank you.
I think when they get short supplies, whenever the money ought to go up, instead of selling for 15, they'll sell for 20, because I know these are very popular.
They are.
Thank you. Thank you to Jared McKinley and Jacob for selling us the school checks and your involvement in the Haywood County Schools Foundation and this fundraiser. Thank you all. Thank you, Jared. Jared's a big NASCAR fan, right? All right. He and I are on the same wavelength, except he's a Dale Jr. fan, but that's okay, he's a good driver. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. David Curtis. Who's going to be introduced by Mr. Moss. Sorry about that.
That's okay, not a problem.
Thank y'all for coming.
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, and board members, I'm introducing the 2012 James McClure Scholarship recipient, David Curtis. David is currently the careers biotechnology teacher at Bethel Middle School. For 14 years, he worked for North Carolina State University as the horticulture agent for Haywood County. In January of 2001, David joined the staff at Waynesville Middle School as the careers biotechnology teacher. In 2005, after Don Nesbit retired, he joined the staff at Bethel Middle School. David is a native of Minnesota, and he attended the University of Wisconsin in Madison, where he received a bachelor's degree in horticultural science in 1985. In 1994, David received his Masters of Agriculture from NC State University, and in 2008, he became a National Board Certified Teacher in career and technical education. David and his wife Claire live in the Thicketty Community and have two daughters, Ellen Anne, a third-generation educator who is a first-year seventh-grade math teacher at Jefferson, Thomas Jefferson Middle School in Winston-Salem, and Emma, a sophomore at UNC Charlotte studying theater and vocal performance. David, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, thank you for the invitation to come and share with you some of the things I've done this past year. Both my teams won this weekend, by the way. Wisconsin won.
All right.
Wolfpack won. It's been a good weekend. It doesn't happen too often in my household. First, I want to take a few minutes and, gosh, I've got all the time in the world, don't I? I just want to take a few minutes and give you about, a little update on the Bethel Middle School Mum Club. I think it's the only club of its type. I came here last year, and I gave the school board a little update. And every year, I like to bring what's the leftovers from the greenhouse and bring them to the central office and share them with the people up there for all the support they give us during the year. This past year was another good year for us. You can see, I guess you have it up on your screens as well as on the big screen. This year, we had a good group of kids, and you can see there in the picture, in October, mid-October, we go to the North Carolina Arboretum where we participate in the Schools Division of the North Carolina Chrysanthemum Society's annual show. They've had, this has been the 35th annual show this year. This was the seventh year that they had a Schools Division. Our middle school grows these flowers. These are the old-timey chrysanthemums. These are not the little half-round ones that you find at the local convenience stores, big-box stores. These are the tall spiders and football mums that we recall when we were in homecoming back in our day in high school. And so the children grow these in the greenhouse at the school. Every October, we take them over to the show, and you can see this group here. We actually, we made our uniforms this year. That was a first for me to learn how to tie-dye with the kids. But we have 11. There's one little girl hiding behind one of them there in the front. One boy in that crowd.
I saw that.
And here's, and here's a list of the kids. We had one sixth grader, a seventh grader, and then a bulk of them were eighth graders this year. We had nine eighth graders, which will be, they'll be moving on up to Pisgah High School. And so one of my plans is to take what we've done at Bethel and introduce this also up at the Pisgah High School. Again, we've competed against, we're the only middle school. We've competed against mainly high schools from the region. The Bullington Center also in Henderson, Henderson County is a school for, I don't want to say troubled youth, but challenging youth. So they have an after-school program where the kids come in and work. Inca High School is going to be growing this coming year. Owen is our big competitor. But we've done quite well against using just middle school kids against the high school kids. In the middle school, it's a little different. We have to form a club because we really don't have FFA programs like they do in the high schools. Again, there's a list of the kids. And you can see, when we take them to the arboretum in October, we take them on a Friday, and all the schools come in the morning. And some of the things that the children learn is one, they learn how to stage or to prepare the flowers or the blooms for the show. And you can see, we're arranging them, we're getting them to display nice and straight in the tubes. We have to pick off any bad petals or leaves at that time. You can see, the little girl there is waiting very patiently for my help from the other girls. But it's, it's quite a learning experience. They learn how judging is done and why certain flowers will judge better than others. And I think the most important is, we take them out of the school setting, and we put them in a very public setting, and we watch how they behave. And they've always behaved very well. So that's important, is to get them out of the school atmosphere and get them in to participate and to see what it's like out in the big world. So the Schools Program started in 2006. We have won the trophy for seven consecutive years at our school, and we're very proud of that fact. Two years ago, they instituted another cup, a memorial to one of the chrysanthemum growers' father, and we have been fortunate enough to win that cup the last two years also. So we're, we're like a marked team when we show up, so.
As started said, you have a target on your back.
Yeah, we do. So this year, hopefully, we'll, we've also have, Beth at Tuscola is interested in growing, and what we'll do is, we'll provide the cuttings and the plant materials from our school to her and to Pisgah, and so we'll try to keep it all in Haywood County in the future here. Next year, also, the national show is back on the East Coast, so hopefully, weather permitting, and if we have some nice blooms, we'll travel up to Pennsylvania again like we did a year ago and enter some up there. But that's, that's how we ended the year. So it was a good year, the kids were great. One thing I would like to mention, that it's not cheap to have this club. It only runs about four months, from August through November, and we meet once or twice a week, depending on the amount of work we do after school. And it runs around $600, just snacks for the kids after school, maybe the T-shirt supplies, buses, substitutes when we travel. And all that money we raise through the greenhouse at the school, the plant sale that we have each spring, and the kids, we work in some of the different classes, preparing the plants and learning to transplant and grow on the crops. So it's a nice program that feeds itself, and we can not have to charge the kids anything to be members of this club, which is, which is good, speaking as a parent who had daughters in school. The second part that I'd like to talk about that Mr. Moss introduced for me was, last year, I was the McClure Award winner for Haywood County Schools, and I was fortunate enough to have a trip to Denmark with 30 other educators from across the state of North Carolina. And these were teachers from elementary schools, from middle schools, and from high schools. And we got together for an orientation in April, and we met, and we learned about where we're going. When you hear about Denmark, Scandinavia, cold, it's, and that's about all I knew about it at the time. It's not a really large country. It's very modern. It's very progressive. They have, I mean, it's very traditionally European. It's, it is one of four Scandinavian countries, 5.6 million people, so it is small. North Carolina has over 9 million, so the population is kind of sandwiched in and around the Copenhagen area, which is one of four major islands that make up the nation. And it's about the size of, if you took two states of Massachusetts, it's about that size. It's about twice the size of Massachusetts. So it is not a big area. They're very advanced, though, in a lot of their alternative energy, and we saw a lot of alternative energy while we were there. We looked at technologies, transportation systems. They're very big into wind turbine production. They have generated a lot of their own electricity through wind turbine. Once we landed, it was just like being back home. I grew up in northern Minnesota. For a big time, we'd go to Fargo, North Dakota, and it was very flat, a lot of the vegetation was very similar. The people even sounded a little bit like they were from Minnesota, or vice versa. But the Danes are also, they're very efficient. They use 50% less electricity than we currently use here in the United States. They use 45% less oil per capita than we do. And probably one of the reasons is because everywhere you go, there are bicycles. Now, we were in a metropolitan area, but there was a huge infrastructure throughout the whole country for bicycles, and they used bicycles a lot. It was incredible. I may have seen five bicycles since I've been back from Denmark in July, and there's just, it's incredible what you would see for the bicycles. And so that's one thing that really stood out in my mind was their use of how they would bike. It was very common for teachers to bike eight miles one way to school and then back. We visited also, visited two schools while we were there. We visited a private school, and you'd think, because the education system is free, even up into the universities, why the need for a private school? They had waiting lists of up to 5,000 students for the school that we visited, and I thought that was quite interesting. The children over there, this is some of the children from one of the schools we visited. The children are the same pretty much all over the world. It's just how we treat the children is what's different. And over in Denmark, from what we saw at this school, the kids were standing on a picnic table, jumping to a set of monkey bars, and swinging around and jumping back. And we, as 30 educators from North Carolina, wanted to run out there and grab them and say, "Don't do that. That's not what you, that's don't, you'll get hurt." And we asked them about that. We asked the superintendent of the school, who was there with us as a little boy came and ran into him with his skateboard there on the school lot. And they have a different philosophy that, you know, if we keep kids from doing certain things, they'll never learn. They'll never learn that it hurts to fall off the picnic table when you miss the monkey bars. And so we're very, this teachers thought, we're so, we're the land of the free, but we're so tied because of our, the legalistic system here of preventing things from happening. And over there, and we saw it time and time again, that they learn from their mistakes, and that's okay for them to make a mistake because they'll learn and not repeat that mistake. But the children are, they're just, they were just wonderful. They were like the kids here at any of the schools. This school was, was actually K through 12. The schools there are very different. You go to school till you're in the ninth grade, and then you can go home if you want. That's the end of your schooling, unless you choose to stay for your 10th, 11th, and 12th year, which is called gymnasium. Now, they don't go run and play ball and go in the gym and do things like that. Gymnasium is their higher education, and a lot of the tracks, it's like the college track. So here is a college or a preparatory school track, and that's, they can choose to do that. They can, again, choose to stay home, they're done with their education, or they can go to a vocational track. And that was really interesting to me, being a vocational teacher, that they could then go to a specialized school that would then teach them those last three years a trade. And I see something like that maybe coming about in this state, where our new governor is very much a proponent of vocational education. And that's a good thing, because, you know, you run into people nowadays where there is not a trade there, and you can't, someone's got to fix something these days. And I think that was a good program for their students. Not all, not all students are, are college material. We talked to some of the teachers, and we got very hesitant answers when we asked them, "Well, what is the average starting salary for teachers, new teachers in Denmark?" And they wouldn't answer us because their principals and superintendents were in the room. And finally, we got the superintendent to tell us that the average starting salary in Denmark is $60,000 a year. Now, you got, it sounds great, but, but my daughter, Ellen Anne, just started down in Winston-Salem, and she's had a starting teacher's salary there as a first-year teacher, but her tax rate was not 59%. And that's, that's the difference, is when you look at the tax rate, because it's a very socialistic type of government, their health care is free, you go to college for free. As a matter of fact, if you're a student in college, you get a stipend of up to $500 a month just to be in college, to help you. So you really don't have to work while you're in college. And so it's a, it's a little different. The tax base is different, a 25% sales tax nationwide, very different than ours. And so they are heavily taxed, but they have lots of, lots of health care. Women with young children can stay at home, it's covered, daycares, childcare. So it has its pluses and negatives. So you really, wow, I'm going to Denmark to teach? No. It's very comparable to what we have here, I think, in North Carolina. But again, the kids, again, they're, they're just, they were very interesting. They all speak wonderful English. You don't, don't think about speaking Danish because you can't, it's too guttural, it's hard to get the words in your mouth. But the children, up to a certain age, once, if they're younger than six, they probably don't speak very good English, but anything after that, it's all English. That's, that's their, their main language after their own Danish language. So we've got kids and bicycles, and one thing that stood out over there was the food. The food was incredible. It was fresh food everywhere. We ate meals at some of the schools, and the teachers were just scared to death, thinking that they would come and visit us, and then we would feed them a sub-sandwich when they served us just these wonderful spreads of cheeses and breads and fish and salmon and pickled herring, if that's what you're after. But all kinds of wonderful foods. And the food that they had was very fresh, it was well-prepared, there was very little fast food. McDonald's was there, Burger King, places like that were there. But it's a different culture. If you've ever traveled to Europe or outside the United States, the food culture is very different because that is their lifestyle. And I found that very interesting, which kind of led me into what I wanted to study when I was there. And I had the opportunity to visit a working farm when I was there, about, I rode the train about 30 miles north of Copenhagen. And there is a program there called Havartamavir, which means soil to stomach. And it's a, this is a very large corporate farm, but you don't know it because they keep that identity kind of out of the picture, because they, they provide a program for schoolchildren to come to a farm and grow food and to see where it comes from. And I found that fascinating because I didn't think they were that far removed from the, from the farm, but, but they actually were. And so the kids would come. And so the kids would come and they would, there was no school buses. They would ride the train, ride a bicycle, and then they'd walk from the station out to the farm, which was about a mile. Um, you can see in the picture, uh, it was a big old, it was a huge old farm that they converted in the classrooms. Uh, the kids are out there. It was raining that day, they didn't care. One of the things I found interesting was they had hay bales, big round hay bales for recreation, and the kids would get on there and play. And again, we would, we would run out there immediately and put a fence around it and keep them out. And I asked, "Well, who supervises them?" And she said, "Well, they kinda supervise themselves. You know, if they get hurt, they'll come tell ya. We don't have to worry about that." One boy broke his arm a week before. If that happened, we would remove our slides and our merry-go-rounds and our swing sets from our schools. They just threw him back out there. He'll learn next time not to jump from this bale to that bale. Again, I, that was just an eye-opener for us educators from North Carolina. Here, the children are out. There's, there's two, two or three farmhands, but there's a lot of parent volunteers, and they'll come out. It was, this crop was planted earlier. It was June. It, this is, Denmark is very far north. The sun, in, in June, uh, the sun came up at four and went down. It was midnight and you could still see outside. I mean, it's, it's, it's very far north. Uh, the winters are pretty harsh, but, but the children then, and then parents will come with the children and watch and take care of the plants. But they'll plant, um, they'll let the children plant, and, and they'll plant what, what they want and, uh, and not interfere too much. Because I said, "Well, do you go back and replant?" They say, "No, because if, you know, if the seeds don't come up, then the children learn from, they planted it too deep or they didn't cover it enough." And I have a tendency in my greenhouse to really micro-manage the kids, and, and then if they pot up something and they set it aside, then I'll come in afterwards and I'll kinda straighten it up and clean up. That's kinda how I am. I would make a lousy Danish teacher. But the Haver to Mavver program, Soil to Stomach, or Farm to Table, we have programs very similar to that here. And I brought some literature from our program. They look at nature. They let the kids explore. At this farm, there's a huge nature preserve. Uh, they not only grow the food, but then they do classes on cooking, and they teach the children food preparation and recipes because, again, that's what takes so much time. It's not figuring out what to have for supper, but also then making sure you have it all at the house and then cooking. So simple recipes, and the kids, the kids take home vegetables and they take home recipes. And so, uh, I, I had a chance to travel also into Holland after the, some of the teachers came home, and I visited the Floriade, which is kinda like a Disney World for plant geeks like myself. My wife came over and we visited this huge, uh, horticultural garden, horticultural exhibition that they have in Holland every ten years. And right smack dab in it was Kids University and Kids Cooking, and they were having cooking, um, classes for children. You can see they were about to cut up this big block of different types of mushrooms that they had. Uh, again, we have, we have these programs here. Growing Minds, Farm to School, Appalachian Grown Local Food, you've seen that ASAP. That's, that's a program over in Asheville that encompasses a lot of the mountains. Uh, I think Bethel Elementary School actually has a farm garden, uh, sponsored through part of funding from this program possibly. I know Bill Holbrook has, has worked with the kids up in that area. And so we actually have a, a program like this started. And so when I left, I, I wanted to talk to my kids about where their food comes from because they, they really, it comes from the grocery store, but, but it's, it's much deeper than that. And so I wanted them to understand, well, how does it get to the grocery store? Or where does it come from? Is it good? And, uh, why is that important? Why that's important is because, uh, type one diabetes is predicted to grow seventy percent by the year 2020. Type two diabetes is increasing at a, an astronomical rate. Uh, the obesity rate, um, of one-third of our children and adults, we're, we're too heavy. And so food is, uh, it's a huge thing. And if they can understand now where it comes from and, and why that's important, uh, that's one of the things. I tried to work in several, uh, lessons on that. So do kids really care where their food comes from? And the answer is kinda yeah and kinda no. We, we don't care. We just want it there when we need it. And so a lot of it can be processed or it can be fast food. Uh, very few times do I, I, I poll my kids in my classes, "Do you actually sit down? Do you actually eat dinner with your parents in the same room with your phone off? No TV? Do you actually talk? Do you..." And that's a traditional, a traditional meal. And, and we find that very few times do they actually experience that. We're a, we're a nation of parents on the go because we've got, uh, meetings to go to at night or sporting events or things of that nature. So, uh, I wanted them to understand the different types of agriculture and, and where their food comes. Is it conventional agriculture production like we have done here for years? Is it organic production, which is very different? But now in every shelf on the supermarkets, you find organic produce. You find organic food. You find gluten-free, which you never saw four or five years ago. Genetically modified crops, they're kind of lurking in the background because virtually everything you eat is, comes from a crop that's been genetically modified. Eighty percent of the corn in the United States is genetically modified. Chairman Francis brought me some genetically modified corn and soybeans. I bet ten years ago, you brought me that seed. We grew some. We're still growing that in the greenhouse. I'll show you a picture here in a minute. But I was at a biotech workshop sponsored by the North Carolina Biotech Center this past summer down in Durham, and I was amazed that the teachers there that are teaching high school science and, uh, what I teach, biotechnology in the middle school, that they did not understand the concept of organic crop production or genetically modified crops. They did not understand it. You still use pesticides if you grow organic crops. They're just natural. They can still kill you. It's still, it's tobacco sulfate, it's rotanone. Uh, there are toxic chemicals. They're just naturally toxic. So that was a whole educational component that I wanted my students to learn. And we looked at, um, different types of, of how crops were made and how we grew them. And we actually, we grew some then at the greenhouse recently. I mean, this summer Walmart sold the first genetically modified sweet corn at Walmart. Right now, genetically modified salmon that grows four times faster is coming online. That's been in the news. So every day, there's something in the news. Europe is very slow to adapt GMOs, but there was a really good video put out by a biotech consortium in, in Europe that I played for my kids, uh, and they saw all these different aspects, uh, enzymes in your clothes washing detergent that, uh, eat away the stains. We actually had little T-shirts and stained them and tried to wash them and see which detergent worked the best. But the, the children, I, I tried to ask them, "Well, what should they expect their food to be? Should it taste good?" Most of them, "Yeah, it's gotta taste good." Uh, "Is it fast?" "Well, is it convenient?" Because it needs to be quickly prepared. I think parents like convenient, fast things, too. And then, "Is it nutritious?" And, and that's really not on their radar yet. Again, recall the information I told you about diabetes. Everyone at our school, I think we're diabetic trained. We have to be. And because we have more and more kids that are showing up with diabetes, obesity, uh, I mean, that's come down from our legislature. Uh, some kind of physical activity or PE every day for the children, um, getting them out and, and active. But that's, that really hasn't sunk in with them. So some of the things I've done, if I can get there, is, uh, yeah, we grew a corn crop at the school, and, and we grew it, and, and one of the farmers come by one day and told me, "It's a good thing I have a chain-link fence around there because the Ross boys kept driving back and forth in front of the school wanting to cut it for silage." 'Cause they're all over Bethel. And so, but this was, we let it sit a long time because this is popcorn, and this is actually, uh, the kids, we grew the popcorn, and we just let it sit on there, on the stalk and dry pretty much. The kids actually picked it. Very many kids, there's, there's not many kids these days actually pick corn anymore, let alone shuck it. I had to try to explain what shuck meant. And, and so we, we dried it down, and then we, we brought out, uh, an old corn sheller that my father-in-law had, and we actually, we run the ears through the corn sheller and we shelled all the popcorn off of it, and it went all over the floor, and it went in, some of it went in the box, actually. And we bagged it up and I sent it home with the kids. I said, "Now, you can't take this home and put it in the microwave." And we had to have a whole lesson on how to put it in a pan with a little oil on the stove and, and to shake it occasionally so it doesn't burn. And, and it's actually turned out very good, and, and so they really enjoyed the popcorn. But that was, that was kind of the hook. You, you get them thinking and you feed them at the same time. Um, we grew, here's the, the genetically modified corn. We drew, grew the conventional corn and then the Roundup Ready Corn. A lot of the corn right, right around the school, uh, in some of those fields is Roundup Ready. And through the Biotech Center, I, I got, uh, the Envirologic Test Strips where you can actually grind up, uh, either the seed or you could, uh, kinda pulp up the foliage and, and you put the little strip in and it'll measure which one has been genetically changed or which one has not been genetically changed. And, and we did that with the children. Then we actually, we suited up and we, we actually sprayed, um, different containers of the corn with Roundup, and we monitored to see which ones survived and which ones did not survive. And that worked pretty good. One of the things I saw when I was in Denmark, uh, the picture, uh, on the left is from the farm, and you can see the lettuce boxes they have out there. I visited another school one evening. I was pedaled around Copenhagen on a bicycle, and, and I found this, uh, school, and they had these planter boxes. They're old shipping crates, and they, they had them filled with soil and, and different things in them. And so what I've done at the school is, is I've built, we, we built some more boxes. I, I had three currently, and we built more, and, and we're gonna build a, a couple more here this spring. And so you can see there's the kids. We're finishing up one. The girls down below are, are planting lettuce. We put lettuce out in and grow different types of lettuces, kale. Kids love kale. Not really, but they don't. But you can take kale and you can put a little oil on it and salt, and you can put it in the oven, and you can make the most wonderful kale chips. And now they'll eat those. And so, yeah, and the other box, you, you can even grow children if you have the right manure. So...
That's how you keep them reined in, baby.
You gotta. That's why we have the fence around the greenhouse, too, is to keep the children. Uh, again, but it, it costs, it, it costs money. Again, the, the school's greenhouse account helps cover that. Other funding sources, uh, there's a, a source down at, in CSU. An agricultural sorority, they'll, they'll fund projects. Uh, the Farm Bureau people have been really good. I've got an application there, and, and Lowe's will provide funding for, for different types of, uh, projects at the school. So there is money out there. You just have to ask for it. So those are some of the things I brought back from Denmark that I'm trying to work into my curriculum at the school this year. Thank you. A lot of the committee members are here that, that went through all the applications last year, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to go. I've taken up way too much of your time.
David, thank you so much for your presentation. David, I was very interested in it because I make a living in agriculture, so don't worry about the timeframe tonight. But you can tell he's a farmer because he didn't say dirt, he said soil. Dirt is a bad word. Dr. Noe.
Next summer, we have an opportunity to send someone to India through the same McClure Fund, and those applications have been distributed to schools, and they'll come in the middle of March.
Very good.
So that will be interesting.
I appreciate you sharing that with us. Thank you very much. Thanks, David. Okay, Ms. Leanna, did anyone sign up to address the board this evening in open session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the closed and open session minutes. The closed session minutes have been corrected, uh, from the January twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, uh, meeting. At this time, I'd entertain a motion that'd be approved as presented and corrected.
Make a motion.
Mr. Henson's made a motion to approve the minutes. Second, Mr. Harbin. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll talk some policies with Mr. Fred Trantham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board, Dr. Garrett. Uh, we have three policies this afternoon for, uh, first reading. Uh, the first policy is A thirty-one, the Safe and Orderly Schools. Uh, the Policy Committee reviewed our current policy, looked at the School Boards Association sample policy, and we added some statements through, throughout this policy, uh, that we thought would, uh, would improve the, 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 the guidelines and, and the information that you find here. We referenced working with law enforcement. Uh, we also, um, added statements to our Safe School and Crisis Plan or Emergency Plan, uh, statements to the staff training, and then, of course, the, um, annual review and the report of inform, information. So that is the areas that we, we made some new statements.
Okay. We will table policy A thirty-one, Safe Schools for thirty days for public, well, until the next regular board meeting for public comment or input.
The next policy is SA four, Pediculosis, or our last policy. Uh, we, uh, added a couple of statements, one under the identification of, of the problem and, uh, identifying the folks who would, would be the identifiers, uh, and also the information concerning the treatment and when a student or even a staff member could return to school.
SA four will be tabled until the next regular board meeting for, uh, public input, uh, and we'll take it up at next board meeting. It'll be tabled till next board meeting. Okay?
And the final policy is SB one. It was the Board Adoption and Changes Policy, and we proposed to change it to Board Adoption, Board Policy Adoption, Changes, Dissemination, and Preservation. And there's a new section added, uh, too, and it basically follows what we do now as far as keeping our policy manual current, also posting the policies to the website and that we, you know, we will distribute our policies to, to our, our various stakeholders.
Okay. Board Policy SB one will be tabled for thirty days for public input to be taken up at the next board meeting. Any other policies, Fred?
That is it for this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trantham, and, uh, appreciate you working, and the folks on the Policy Committee, thank you for your hard work. Now we'll hear from our Chair of our Finance Committee, Mr. Jim Francis.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee, uh, Committee met today and went over the monthly finance reports. Everything seemed to be in order. Uh, we approved them during our meeting, and at this time, I'd like to bring them before our board for approval.
Form of a motion? Okay. Mr. Francis has made a motion to approve the regular monthly financial reports. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from the Finance Committee?
That's it right now.
Thank you very much. Now we have, uh, an update as promised, an adjustment and a report from the Building and Grounds Committee by Mr. Harbin.
Mr. Chairman, before I start, I'll just say that for years, the man that done this is with us tonight, Walt Leatherwood, and I think you guys, it's the first thing I've ever had to do, and you've sent him here to keep track of me. I don't know what's going on, but I'm on a, in the form of a, a motion, I'd like to make a recommendation the Building and Grounds Committee would to allow the Haywood Waterways to seek, to seek grant funds to build two bio-retention ponds at Waynesville Middle School, and after their results, we, we will see from there how much labor that we already have that we would kick in to complete this project.
Okay. Mr. Hargrove's correcting it. It would be one bio-retention pond.
And two sister.
And two sisters.
Two sisters, okay.
Okay. So you messed up right in front of Mr. Leatherwood.
I'm just reading what they wrote. I didn't write this.
Okay, we have a motion from the Building and Grounds, uh, Committee to approve some work at Waynesville Middle School. We have a second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.
I'll try to do better.
All right.
I'd also like to make a recommendation to Building and Grounds Committee to proceed with the Pisgah High School addition, as presented to us tonight.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Who would like to second this one?
Mr. Trantham.
Mr. Henson. I think a lot of folks would like to second this one, but we'll let Mr. Henson do it. I think he was first on the draw. We have a motion on the floor, and a second. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate all the work that Tracy's put in, in getting this put together and presented to us. I really appreciate his hard work on it.
And I think it would behoove us all to make sure that we have a presence whenever this is presented at the County Commission, to make sure that they understand our position and how we're going to accomplish this much-needed addition at Pisgah High School. The scope of this project is very important for Haywood County Schools' future. Anybody else have a comment? I don't want to hog the microphone. It's a great opportunity for us to do something good for Pisgah High School. It's much needed. Any other questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from Building and Grounds?
That's all.
Mr. Harbin, I think you did a great job. And we are honored to have Mr. Leatherwood with us tonight, and former board member here. Glad to you be here, too, Mr. Leatherwood, or Walt. The other item that we had added on to the agenda adjustment, we had sent a letter in response to the County Commission, really asking us about the possibility or feasibility about what to do about SROs in the elementary schools. And our letter, basically, as per this discussion that this board had, we basically talked about the fact that we were looking at many different areas to, that we could do safety in the schools, not just SROs, and what we would like to proceed with. And I think that it brought some question as to what we really want to go forward with, and what the timeline would be. And I think that we probably need to kind of discuss with our administrators and Mr. Hargrove, kind of a further next step, where do we go from there? And one of the suggestions that I thought might be helpful is if we had an opportunity for the public to tell us what their thoughts are. And we can also use this as an opportunity to share what we are currently doing, what we can do, and what we can't do, and what we can afford to do, and what, you know, there's a lot of things that are questioned, and I think it'd be a good opportunity to have a dialogue. And I think if we could come up with some type of, and we've had forums before, where public comes and has an opportunity to express their views, and we have an opportunity to share what we know about what we can do, and what we have done. So I would suggest that if, that we have some type of public forum for that type of discussion, what do y'all feel about it?
Well, I think the better for everyone, us and everyone involved, to be most informed and best informed, that's what we need to do. That's just my opinion.
Any other comments? I filled out that survey from the National School Board Association about what was your district doing. It was pretty, a lot of good questions in there. It made you think about, you know, hey, we're doing a lot already, you know? And I don't think a lot of folks, once you sit down and start thinking about it, don't realize how much we really are doing. I think a lot of systems aren't doing what we're doing, and our plans for the future. So let's, I'll get with Dr. Garrett and administration, and we'll try to come up with a date that would be in a time we matter, that everybody can try to be here, and have a public forum, and let us take some information back to what do our parents want, what do they not want, et cetera. And we'll get together and get back to all the board. Is that okay with everybody? I think we need to have that discussion, so we'll have direction on it. The last thing on our agenda is our personnel, as presented by Dr. Ann Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have four separation from employments, you have four leave of absences, and for your approval, you have five employments, 10 employee status changes, one contracted service, 24 independent contractors, 38 substitutes, 38 employee coaching contracts, and 22 volunteer services.
Okay. Do I hear a motion may be approved as presented? Make a motion. Mr. Harbin's made a motion, I hear a second. Second, Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. I've been informed that I don't have to have a motion to adjourn, so I'm just going to say, unless there's something that needs to come before this board, meeting adjourned.